At this time, we call our meeting to order our acts that we stand for our invocation and pledge allegiance. To our great Creator, who is worthy of all betterment of the citizens of Florence, that we may serve all those who are around us and that we may be a vision for all of the nation. We thank you in advance for all that you have done, all that you are doing, and most of all, for what you will do. And we will be so mindful to always give you the honor, the glory, and the praise. And if there's anything that will occur here within us that will hinder you from doing your will, we ask that you clean us out, that we will be a living sacrifice in temple for you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you have before us our agenda. And before we proceed, we do have an addendum that has been asked to be placed on our agenda.
We move to approve.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed light sign. Let the minutes reflect that the addendum has been added to our agenda and it will be an agenda item for executive session for a discussion related to Economic Development Project thirty-seven, that's seventy-eight five. So at this time, we will proceed with our agenda as outlined. First, we have approval of minutes. Minutes from August the twelfth, twenty twenty-four, special meeting. August the twelfth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. And August seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, special meeting. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed light sign. Next, we will move forward with our honors and recognition. And we will have service recognition coming forth. And I believe we will have a member staff to read out each member as we have a representative who will come for each department to present them.
Madam Mayor, first we have Larry Richardson, our department, celebrating twenty-five years.
All right, um, this is, well, actually, this is Wayne. I call him Little Wayne. Um, I guess I need to call him how that's said, too. Wayne came to work for us in, um, work for us in nineteen ninety-nine, September. Uh, and when he came to work, there was a guy already here named Wayne. And, um, he was Wayne Jordan, he'd been here a long time, and he was older than Wayne. So we had Wayne, and then we had Little Wayne. So this is Little Wayne. So, um, started in nineteen ninety-nine, assigned in Station One Eleven, which is on Thomas Street. Uh, he gets promoted in April of two thousand and five. Uh, after he got promoted, bounced around to a couple stations real quick and moved right back to Station One, which is kind of unusual, but that's where he's been for the last twenty years. Uh, most of the time, you know, you have, you move up, go to different stations, up stations, and all those kinds of things. However, he's been there for a long time. Uh, and that's kind of less of like a type of person is, he's very hard worker, very dependable, uh, who works real good with other people, is the biggest fire station that we have with so many people coming in and out of there. So that says a lot about his character. Um, Wayne also does a lot of work on our apparatus, very mechanically inclined, does a lot of stuff on electrical work, does all our maintenance on our small engines and stuff, our smoke fans, our education tools, those types of things. So he worked really hard on that as well. Uh, so congratulations on twenty-five years, he's very dependable, he works very hard, and I appreciate his service.
We next have Henry Hank Glover, celebrating twenty-five years and a retirement.
Hank actually started basically the same day that, uh, Little Wayne did. Uh, they actually went through all the preliminary stuff together. Uh, he was assigned to Station One as well, uh, on different shift. Matter of fact, he started on, on my shift, um, that I was on. Uh, and he introduced us to a lot of different things. Um, Hank is very knowledgeable in a lot of stuff. Uh, and some things he's knowledgeable on, I can't argue with him, but I just have to agree with him. He's a smart guy, I know you, you know, he talks about things, I know his things out. And he introduced us to rock works and sauerkraut, which is really wasn't our favorite thing at that particular time, but anyway. Um, he was promoted driver and assigned to Station Two in two thousand and two. Station Two was located on the north side of town, over on Mann Street. Um, he worked there for, it takes ten years. Um, made a lot of good friends over there, um, Mr. Green across the street, and everybody kind of adopted our Station Two, and it really called a lot of hand. Um, he drove there for several years, promoted captain in March of twenty-ten. At that particular time, we went through a lot of change in our organization. So he was a captain, uh, promoted to twenty-ten in March. In July of that same year, he was promoted to the captain chief of training. So he was only a captain for a short while before he moved up, um, very quickly to the chief of training. Uh, he stayed in training for ten years, then he was promoted to deputy chief in twenty-twenty. So speaking about all that, when he was the training captain, our training chief, deputy chief, and all that, he and I worked together for many, many years together. So it's been a pleasure working with him so long. Um, and as they alluded to just a while ago, um, and to, not this Friday, but next Friday will be his last day. Uh, he retired twenty-five years of service, so we're missing him, appreciate everything he's done for us, he's done a lot for this organization. Um, and I wish him well in what he does.
Now we have Mark Browder, celebrating twenty years in the utilities department.
Congratulations to the firemen, but over on the utility side, we've got another great accomplishment. Uh, twenty years for Mr. Mark Browder. Um, back in two thousand and four, Mark came on board to, uh, work with us in the distribution, uh, division of the utility department where he was fixing water leaks, he did that job for six months. After that, he, you know, showed a lot of promise and, um, you know, future, um, the ability to excel in the future, so he took a job as a water plant operator, uh, in the groundwater, um, division of utilities. So he, over the next ten years, became, you know, an expert in all of our groundwater plants, how to operate the system effectively and make good clean groundwater, um, got up to a C-level operator there. Um, after that, he bumped over to compliance, still within the utilities department, but working in compliance in the, kind of in our wastewater portion of compliance, working on, uh, the fat soil and grease programs, where he regulated all the restaurants and made sure that, uh, the wastewater discharge that go out were, were clean and acceptable for the system. Um, after that, oh, Mark got a job over here at the city center. He left the utility department temporarily for about a year and a half. He came over to work in community services where he did maintenance in this building and also went out into the community and handled, uh, the contractors that were doing renovations, had to remodels and, um, constructions for our homes that are within the community service division. So Mark got some new experience there, but, uh, you know, Mama called him back home to the utility department again about two years ago. I'm very thankful for that, because I get to work with Mark now closely, he's managing our backflow program. Uh, if you don't know, the backflow program is really important. Uh, every water account, commercial, um, commercial water account has a testable backflow device on it that's there, um, to protect from outside contamination, from ever getting in our water system. So Mark, uh, handles that program by himself, he does a great job with that, um, just like he's done with all his other positions over the years. He's been a great employee the entire time, I'm very thankful to, uh, to have him here and to know him. Truthfully, he'd probably rather be on the lake with his wife, his daughters, and his new grandbaby, but, um, I'm really thankful to have him here with us at the city. Uh, thank you for twenty years, Mark, very much.
And that concludes our service recognition, but congratulations to all these great years, twenty years and above. That speaks a lot. And also, when it comes to retirement, I believe that's going to be a good journey. And so, but thank you to everyone for your service. Next, we'll move on to our ordinance imposition. First, we have bill number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen for a second reading. It's an ordinance providing for the issuance and sales of combined waterworks and sewage system revenue bonds of the city of Florence, South Carolina, authorizing the issuance of bonds, anticipation notes, and other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed light sign. Let it reflect the bill has passed second reading. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annexing zone RG dash three, phase two of Smithfield subdivision identified as Florence County tax map parcel number zero zero one zero 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 dash zero one dash three three seven through zero zero one zero zero dash zero one dash three eight zero. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed light sign. Let it reflect the bill has passed second reading. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen for a second reading. It's an ordinance to annexing zone CG, the lots of five twenty-five South avenues of road identified as Florence County tax map number zero 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 seven four dash zero one dash three three four. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposed light sign. Next, we'll move to our reports to council. At this time, I am going to ask Mr. Tim Wilson to come forward and give us an update on some projects we are working on with our park areas.
Thank you very much. As you know, our parks, um, range from our community parks to our sports tourism complexes and provide a major quality of life to our citizens and really enhances our community as we draw in other businesses and industry to our community. So we're really focusing on what we're doing. Um, Dr. Iola Jones Park, the first park that, to discuss. We, um, getting ready to replace the backboards on the courts out there. Uh, that should be done within the next couple of months. We are also working through a amphitheater program to put a new amphitheater, um, out there. And there's some working through that project, so we're hoping to have that done within the next six months to a year. Um, the next thing is our boxing program will get back off the ground during, at Iola Jones. Uh, we are in the process of hiring an individual now, uh, part-time to help us oversee that program. I'm very excited about the steps we're taking there. At Freedom Florence, we are in the process of replacing all our lights on our nine softball fields, and they'll go from their standard halogen bulbs to the LED lights, which will not only enhance that facility, but will also, um, save on our energy costs out there. So we're very excited about that. That project should begin in November. We're also going to resurface our lower field, our four lower fields at Freedom Florence for our youth softball program. And at gymnastics, we're going to upgrade the lobby and we're replacing the pit blocks that have not been replaced in about fifteen years for our growing gymnastics program. Over at Northwest Park, there was a partner that had come forward, um, to do a fitlots-type, um, facility there. Um, as we, as we ventured into this and had made, had a lot of conversations, we felt like that was, uh, we made the decision not to pursue that partnership, but we are looking at other things to add and features to add into that part, such as a walking trail, um, and other features there to continue to improve Northwest Community Park. At Timrod Park, you know, we installed the playground equipment this year, and it's getting a lot of use. Uh, we're, we're also in the process of finalizing the pickleball court, um, expansion along with resurfacing all our tennis courts. And then continuing to look at some possible improvements coming up would be, um, redoing or upgrading our bathrooms and doing some concrete work to help as you go down into the park. Over at Levy Park, um, our senior center, we have purchased a new kennel for, to, for pottery that we're very excited about. That's a program that we're going to continue to move forward with. Uh, it's really the only one that we have within the city of Florence. And then we're working, you know, there's major investment going into Levy Park that that project will continue to move forward, and we're excited about where that could, where that project will lead and what that will do for our community. Uh, McLeod Park, we're continuing, our Parks Crew is working extremely hard, continuing to open that park up. Um, we have done a lot of tree work in that park. Um, so if you get a chance to ride by, take a look at it, there's a, it just, it looks ten times better, able to see through the park now. Uh, we're also, McLeod has also been recognized as a spot to put one of our, one of three dog parks, and we're excited about that project, hopefully to get that project off the ground in the next couple of months. Um, Dr. Eddie Floyd Tennis Center, you know, we have future investment of expanding that facility. Um, it's one of our major sports tourism hubs and brings a lot of economic impact into our city. So we're looking forward to expanding that facility with additional courts, hard courts and clay courts, um, and hopefully partnering with Doctors Bruce and Lee to expand that facility and within the next year, year and a half. Um, at the Florence Soccer Complex, we, we added four more fields, it brings that facility to fourteen. Those fields are now up and running and being utilized by our youth programs now. Um, we'll also utilize them in October when we bring the Florence Cup in, which will have close to a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty teams coming to the city during that weekend. Uh, our trails, uh, we're working, there's going to be, we're working on different, several different things. Um, one of them is the High Hill Expansion, which is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars investment that we're hoping to have done within the next six months. Uh, the rail trail connector from the back of soccer over to the rail trail should be done, hopefully by the end of the year, and that's a million-dollar investment. And some other work that we're doing, we're going to redo the boat launch, um, and boardwalk by Naturally Outdoors that goes into Jeffries Creek, and also partnering with CVB on doing the fixing the trailhead across the street from Veterans Park to make it safer and more attractive for the visitors that we have within our community at our hotels. Uh, Pearl Moore, we're working towards the investment of expanding that facility. Excited about that, what that can mean for our youth programs and for sports tourism. And other possible projects that we're looking at, um, you know, that we've recognized and we have on our kind of five-to-ten-year plan would be to upgrade, uh, Timrod Park Amphitheater. Would also be to redo the bridges around Jeffries Creek Park. Uh, McLeod Park possibly adding outdoor volleyball courts, sand courts for the community, and new picnic shelter at South Park. And our Parks Crew continues to work extremely hard and really bringing our parks up at every one of them and doing an outstanding job.
Thank you so much for that report.
And we have the next project, last one, the next project we have, um, that we're working through right now that we're very excited about is the football expansion, um, trying to finalize the location of that and that project, but that will be a major, um, impact on our football program and about, and within tourism.
And I want to thank you for that report, and also just to remember that the project that was just named, especially the football project, when it came to the tennis center, is an award-winning, um, project. And also, the tennis center has just also received awards. So I want to say to our city manager, Tim, to all of us, and to Ms. Nash, who's out, who's welcomed a new little life here.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations and thank y'all for the work that y'all do every day.
Thank you very much.
To make sure the city of Florence is successful. I will always say, it is because of your work, our staff members who operate this city day-to-day, that we are positioned where we are. So we truly appreciate you, thank you for all that you're doing. We're looking forward for the great works that's going to be occurring in our different parks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, um, I do want to acknowledge that this past Saturday, there was an event that was held at the Pearl Moore Center, and it's an event that's been being performed for the last seven years. It's actually was, um, one of the sponsors came out of our city recreational staff, but they also joined with law enforcement, um, through, with also the sheriff department, and also members from Timminsville. And they sponsor annual, um, basketball tournament. And the great thing about this is that it's for teens, especially for our teen males. And a lot of time, people are always saying, what can you do to help this, to make sure young people on the right track? I want to commend all the participants for Saturday for what they did. That is what we do, to have our youth on the right track. We've got to be engaged with them and show them the opportunities that are available here in Florence. I truly appreciate that. But also, I want to acknowledge back in August at Florence Stockton Tech, there was a major health event that was coordinated that had representatives throughout from the Florence County, also Marion, who brought together information to share about health and things that can be done to improve the health. So I want to acknowledge that organization, but also for a reminder that we're in our new month of September, and we're coming upon nine eleven. Nine eleven is a date that we should never forget. And I'll encourage you, if there's any celebrations that are taking place, please participate. And if you're not a part of a celebration, and I say celebration because regardless to the tragedy, we came together, and we came together as a nation. So we need to remember that spirit that we had when we came together and operate in that same spirit every day. Because when you think about our nation, there's going to always be someone or something pulling against us, but we need to pull together. So I want us to take a moment on nine eleven to always remember that date, the lives that were lost, but also the heroes who stepped up to the scene to help. But also remember the heroes who are still suffering from the health effects of nine eleven. And so with that, I want to conclude my report, and I do want to acknowledge that Mr. Wilson stated about with the Northwest, there was a grant, the partner was actually a grant that we received. But the amount of the grant and the obligation to the grant was more than what we could take ourselves and make this project happen. So we're thankful for the opportunity for the grant, but I'm more thankful that our staff sat down, looked at those numbers, said, we can do this. So we appreciate that. So at this time, that concludes my mayor's report, and we'll move forward on our agenda. We'll go to our committee reports. And first, we have a committee report from the chair from our Business Development Committee Chair.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the Business Development Committee met on August the fifteenth, uh, myself along with, uh, Councilwoman Barnes and Councilman Braddock. Uh, we had a very good conversation along with, uh, Scotty Davis and Clint Moore and Mr. Hemingway. And we discussed, um, several matters involving the developments that are occurring in our community. Urban Square across the street from us, which if anybody has noticed, now at least it's leveled out. They've been out there working on the dirt and they got it, uh, ready for construction. Uh, I can tell you, for the last five years, we've been ready for construction on this end for a long time. Looking forward to seeing some actual, uh, something coming out of the ground very soon. Um, we also had an update regarding one twenty-seven West Evans Street. That permits are being initiated, and that process is underway as we speak. Uh, we also got an update regarding the capital sales tax third penny and the, uh, work that's being done on the roads. And that is, uh, vital to the success of our community, that the paving continues. Uh, and as, just as a reminder, the city does not have any dedicated funds when it comes to doing any paving. So we've been able to rely on the funds that we got through that third penny to do a lot of the work that you've seen in our community with regard to paving and road upgrades. We also got an update in terms of what happened when a tropical storm, Debbie, I think it was, by the time it got to us. And kudos to all the city staff, to all the city departments for working collaboratively, to really be proactive as much as possible to address it, and then to, uh, those issues that came up, to, to take a look at those. Um, we also got updates as far as grants that we've received from the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority for various projects that are taking place. Mr. Hemingway gave us a nice update on that. Thank you so much, Michael, for that. And, uh, we're continuing to make progress on our, um, the three systems, if you will, the water lines, the wastewater sewer lines, as well as the storm water. And all of that infrastructure is in great need of upgrades and repair. And any grants that we can receive to address these issues, to help these systems work better, we're appreciative of, and, uh, we look forward to continued improvement in those, uh, areas. Uh, we also had a brief discussion about the surface water treatment plant expansion, Jeffries Creek, um, sanitary sewer interceptor, as well as Timrod Park, um, what was happening there. And we also got an update as far as AESC and what's happening out there as well. And that was it. If there's anything else for other members of council? Okay, that's our report.
Thank you for the report. Next, we'll have a report from the Community Development Chair Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Community Development Committee met on Wednesday, September the fourth at three o'clock. Um, and present was, uh, myself and Shaques McCall. Uh, we met to discuss community, um, development efforts. Tim, um, actually went over some of those things that we discussed, so I won't repeat those. But we did have, um, we do have nineteen open projects as far as home, um, restorations, the, um, weatherizations, and we have two demos that are on the way. We, uh, talked about the process that's in, that we are now trying to put in place for those homes that are hard to reach, uh, with, um, multiple owners that we can't reach. And so we're trying to look for a process, um, where we could make that process a little easier to clean up our community with the dilapidated homes. Um, that was about it, um, unless I'm leaving something out. Um, so I, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Next, we're having a report from the Chair of the Community and Public Relations Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, when it comes to the marketing and public relations, um, staff is continuing to promote Si, Chris, in our communities and encourage customer participation. So if you have not downloaded Si into your phone, please make sure you've done so. Eight five five nine six four thirty-nine twenty-nine. All right, that sounds right. I'm good, y'all. All right, so our registration for City U Fall Session has closed, and the seven-week, uh, session begins on September the sixteenth, so we are excited about that. And I see one of our City U, uh, participants in the audience. Uh, also, the city center farmer's market resumed their regular operating hours of nine to one each Saturday. So please make sure you patronize the city center's farmer's market, get all your fresh products, uh, produce that you need. Um, the market's cultural garden harvest celebration is planned for September twenty-first. And this year, they are highlighting foods that are commonly grown and consumed in Latin America. So don't miss out for that, don't miss out on that one, September the twenty-first. Uh, come and, uh, get some Latin American food. Um, also, the marketing communications team is releasing a new video, um, promotional series called Florence in Focus. Uh, that will be shared on all the social media outlets. Uh, you can tune in this week in observance of the tragic events that took place on September the eleventh, two thousand and one, and a highlight of the Florence Veterans Parks Memorial that reflect the resilience and unity that emerged from the tragedy standing as enduring symbols of strength, hope, and remembrance. So please make sure, uh, you tune in for that. Um, also, we have had twenty-six thirty-four customers to engage with Si for a total of over four thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven communications. So, uh, Si is definitely working, he's engaging with people, letting you guys know what's going on. So make sure, make sure, make sure that you download him, um, into your phone if you ever need anything. Um, Si has all the real-time information. Um, also, September is, uh, suicide prevention month. Um, it is cancer, childhood cancer awareness month, and also sickle cell awareness month. And I definitely want to do something with that. I kind of, uh, want to do something with sickle cell. But, um, that is something that you have to get tested for. And, um, some of us don't even know we have that trait because it does not cause illness. So you actually have to be tested for the sickle cell. So, um, that's an awareness month along with substance use recovery. Um, so that is, uh, all of September Awareness Month. Please be aware, take heed, and don't forget to sign up for Si. Please be aware, take heed and don't forget to sign up for Saipris. And that completes my report.
Thank you for that report, Chair. And I do want to, um, comment on the sickle cell from a health standpoint. I totally agree with you because it's very prevalent and with the trait, a lot of time, the importance of knowing whether or not you have the trait is that when you just have the trait, if your spouse does not, you won't transfer the active disease. But if you and your spouse both carry the trait, if you were to reproduce, there's a wanting for a chance that one of your children would have the active disease of sickle cells. So that's why it's important to get tested with that. And it is a very painful disease that sometime can cause early death. And my family has experienced it, so I'm very aware of this. And I have a friend who's very active in, um, the country area, their foundation, we have their foundation here. So thank you to you and your committee for highlighting that. Thank you so much. So at this time, we have a report from the Chair from the Finance Audit and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Finance Committee, uh, we met on last Wednesday, September 4th, uh, here in the city chambers, uh, council chambers. Um, we discussed a couple of things, primarily what the, the bulk of our conversation, um, was around the update of the water system, um, since the Bull Water Advisory and Low Pressure, um, event that happened earlier this month, uh, earlier last month, excuse me. Um, secondly, we went over, uh, the budget carry for, carry forward, carry forward ordinance that will be, uh, brought before us the next council meeting. I think we're going to review that again, um, prior to it coming up, um, for the October meeting. Lastly, we did discuss, um, uh, the opioid funding applicants that receive funding. Um, Glenn had gave out a packet, uh, for, as far as compliance, uh, to see how many, um, of the opioid applicants, um, how many people were they touching? Uh, we reviewed that and, um, I'm pleased to say that I think that the applicants were very, um, uh, were doing their job and it reached a lot of people here in Florence County. Um, so we'll continue to have that, um, as we move forward. In addition, we're looking at, um, I think the first proposal, um, set out for $25,000 for us to create a separate organization to help, uh, make recommendations to the council about future funding for these, um, for the future applicants that was to apply. Um, we just took a look at, I think Greenwood had, had one in place, um, and I think Scotty is working on it, possibly presenting something to us, uh, pretty soon as the council, um, so we can make a decision on that. And last, well, lastly, this time is, we reviewed the monthly, the monthly financials of July, which ended the fiscal year of 2024. Um, everything appears, appears to be good and, um, yeah, that concluded our meeting, which was last Wednesday, and that will conclude my report.
Um, thank you for that report. And I do want to add, in your seeking of information, when it, that $25,000 to sort out a team to look at actually allocating the funds, I do want to acknowledge that the county do have a group that's from the community that do look at how their allocation of the opioid money is advanced. I commend them on that being proactive as well. So at this time, we will move forward with our executive session. First item we have is A for a discussion related to a contractual matter, that's 30 dash four dash 78 two. Then we have a added item, which would be, um, item B for a discussion related to economic development project 30 dash 70 dash 70 A five. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move second.
We have a motion in second and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? We're now into our executive session. We are back from executive session at which point no actions and no vote were taken. Um, the executive session items were for a discussion related to contractual matter 30 dash four dash 78 and two, and also for discussion related to economic development project 30 dash seven dash 70 A five. And there was no action or no vote. That completes our executive session. That completes our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
End of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.